The council work session, and we have two items. The Impact Community Action Partnership update and the American Rescue Plan Act. I assume update also, so I'll turn it over to the manager and have him introduce.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and council members. Thanks again for an early morning meeting. We've got the two topics. I'm going to bring Ann on up, and as she does, I want to thank her for all her great work with our community. As a reminder, when would it be? Several years ago.
Oh, I'm going to talk about that.
Are you? Many years ago, we used to do some of this work and were able to twist Ann's arm a little bit to help us do it in a more effective way through a nonprofit. And Impact stepped up. What was the name before?
Red Rock Community.
Red Rock, yes. And even changed their branding to recognize the additional responsibility they were willing to take on in our Des Moines community. I know she'll be getting into the LIHEP and other projects, but especially stepping up during COVID and post-COVID, recognizing our community needed new solutions. And we had some opportunity for some new funding at the federal level and worked very closely with our county. So again, I just want to thank you for the service that you do. We are only as strong as our nonprofits are able to be effective, and we use Impact quite a bit as an example of success to try and get some of our other nonprofits to step up. So, thank you, Ann. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and thank you for inviting me today. I'm going to cover a little bit of history, and not just the history of our agency, but of community action as a whole, and talk a little bit about what's happening now and also highlight the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. There's a lot of words up here, but the history of community action started in 1964 when Johnson declared war on poverty. Out of the legislation they passed, not only community action was born, but also Head Start and Legal Aid and Job Corps. So, a number of things came out of that, and we consider them sister and brother organizations. Polk County Community Action formed in December of 1965. And I pulled a quote from the newspaper. At that time, most entities thought of poverty in a very detrimental way, and in particular, governments did so. And one of the things community action demanded was participation by those we serve. And you had to do elections of people to your board from the people you served. And I loved this quote a lot. It is also better than holding elections in poverty areas because there isn't a sufficient concentration of the poor in Des Moines to make this plan practical. So, the government was contending that there were no pockets of poverty in Des Moines at that time. Well, in Polk County, it was 12.3% versus what is 10.1% today. So, we know that in Des Moines proper, there were pockets of poverty, but the entity did not want to engage in the elections they needed to. That is the beginning of a fairly long, what was typically a contentious relationship between community action and governments, which is interesting because it came out of the government. It's a, to be a community action organization recognized, you have to receive the federal CSBG block grant funds and be appointed by a state. And so, there's this huge government involvement with who we are, but it works best, as you all recognized eventually, for it to operate outside of government control. You know, history repeats itself. In 1967, the state proposed reorganizing into 16 regions. At the, before that time, most community actions were county-based, so they were very, very localized. And in 1968, Greater Opportunities formed. I don't know if any of you remember Greater Opportunities, but it combined Polk, Warren, Jasper, Marion, Story, and Boone Counties were added later. So, Greater Opportunities operated until 1976, when the city of Des Moines withdrew from Greater Opportunities. There was a lot of controversy going on around Greater Opportunities work. For example, I applaud the work they did, but one of the things they did was partner with the Black Panthers around reaching children and families. And at that time, that was not seen as a positive action, and the city of Des Moines withdrew and became the community action for the city of Des Moines. In 1977, right around that same time, Greater Opportunities dissolved completely and was replaced by Red Rock Community Action, which you talked about, in all areas except the city of Des Moines and Story County. In May of 2015, so nine years ago, it would have been nine years ago last week, I stood before the council as we worked towards an assumption agreement for the community action to once again go back to a private nonprofit, and the council was split. And the council was split so hard that the mayor had to vote. And I was not expecting that that day. So, it was a very memorable experience because I thought I was just coming to talk about how great it was going to be, and then it was fairly contentious. But I am very, very thankful that the council determined that it was best for it to go back into a nonprofit. And in October of 2015, Red Rock changed its name to Impact Community Action Partnership to better reflect the broader area we were serving. It was called Red Rock way back because the, if you look at the counties they were serving, Marion County held a lot of sway at that time, and they had the Red Rock area that they were trying to promote, and it became Red Rock. But now, we are Impact. Our current services revolve around essential needs. All of our work currently is built out of Maslow's hierarchy of needs that recognizes that families cannot do better if they are not having their essential needs met regularly. And that includes housing, energy assistance, health and food, and then we also do local programs. So, around housing, we do rental assistance, mortgage assistance, deposit assistance, and we've also done some relocation assistance if it helps a family become more stable. Energy, our biggest program before COVID was LIHEP, the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, which provides families with a single, one-time payment per year towards their energy bill. The average award this last year was just around $500. There's a lot of misunderstanding of how LIHEP works. A lot of people think that's monthly, or they get it more frequently. They do not. Wrapped into LIHEP, though, are some funds typically for emergency needs. This is the first time in 20 years that the state nearly ran out of LIHEP assistance funds, and so LIHEP finds itself with virtually no money to help with emergency shut-offs this summer. And we typically do fans and air conditioners as well, and we will not have funds for that. So, we're reaching out to emergency management to reach out to local fire departments and other folks to help us generate some fans and air conditioners for families. We have food pantries. In the city of Des Moines, we have a food pantry near Drake, and we rent from the city of Des Moines, the old Park and Rec building, which prior to being a Park and Rec building was a firehouse. And so, we rent that facility and have our administrative offices there, which was required by the assumption agreement that we move our offices to Des Moines, and also a food pantry and an outreach office. Food pantry, food carts, personal care items, senior farmer's market. And then, in all of our areas, we have local programs that meet the need of the local area that may be different. The one example I put up here, although there's more than one, is Grasp Cards. The city of Des Moines provides Park and Rec assistance for families through Grasp, and Impact administers that so that we meet with families, do their income determination, and provide them with that assistance. This is a chart of where we were compared to where we are now in the number of people we serve in the Des Moines area. And the fiscal year 2016 was the first year that Impact existed as a whole. We served 8,666 families in the city of Des Moines. You can see throughout the time, up until 2019, we saw steady increase, but we actually really stabilized right around 11,400 or so from 18 to 20. And then, you'll see a marked increase during the pandemic, and that is due to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which we'll talk about. And this year, to date, we've served over 12,000 households in Des Moines. We would expect it to level back out right around the high 11,000s or 12,000. And the housing, you can see, is what drove much of that. We were pretty flat around the number of people we served in housing. Housing funds, just so you know, are very hard to come by. There is not a lot of funding. It is one of the few essential needs that doesn't have a ability to meet the needs of most families. For example, Section 8, which the city administrates, has, I think, around between 3,500 and 4,000 vouchers. I'm not sure if anyone knows. Anyway, right around that, that there's between 11,000 and 12,000 families that qualify for those vouchers. And so, the need is great in that area, and very few places, again, now are providing any sort of assistance. So, we had two families, and then 14 families, and then 16 families. You know, we were slowly increasing, trying to find funds to help families. And then, it exploded when we got the Emergency Rental Assistance. So, that blue line up there is the housing assistance we were able to provide. And also, there's a dollar amount at the bottom that indicates the amount of funds that we expend in direct assistance. Right between 90 and 92% of the funds we manage go out in direct assistance. We keep our overhead and our administrative costs very, very low, right around 8% to 10% for all, and that includes all staff, all things that support it. This is just cash that either goes to a vendor or to a family. When we formed, we had about 7.2 million going out in direct assistance, and in 2022, we had about $56 million in direct assistance flow through the agency. Last year, 59.7% of the households Impact served lived in the city of Des Moines, but Des Moines only holds 33% of the population of our service area. There was concern, and I just want to allay that from the council nine years ago, that we would shift services out of Des Moines, and in fact, somewhat the opposite occurred because the need and the level of poverty is so much higher within the city limits of Des Moines. 49% of the Impact population living below 100% reside in the city of Des Moines. So, we even elevate above that around the need.
Ann, just a quick question on the direct assistance. Does that, if it's for rent, does it go to the property owner?
Currently, and actually, you'll hear ERAP, we have stopped providing rental assistance through ERAP due to a lack of funding. The only time that people get direct funding that doesn't go to a landlord or a utility vendor or another vendor is if, for rent, for example, we had a short period of time where if a landlord refused to participate, then we would provide the funding to the tenant so they could pay their rent. But that was only if the landlord refused to participate. When we moved to the Justice Center, which I'll talk a little bit about, it all went directly to landlords. So, the vast majority of funding goes direct to vendors. In LIHEP, there's times when families get checks as well, and that's if their utilities are included in their rent. Because the utilities already paid for, the funding goes back directly to the family. So, we want to talk about Emergency Rental Assistance. I can remember, as Taylor Swift would say, all too well, getting a call from Chris Johansson that said, "We're anticipating getting some rental assistance funds. Would you be willing to administer it?" And I said, "Sure. I mean, you know, that's what we do." And it was not long after that that I got a call from the county that said exactly the same thing. So, just to give you an overview of what it was, ERAP 1, there was two. One came out of the Trump administration, and the second tranche came out of the Biden administration. The first round provided up to 12 months of assistance. So, this came out, we launched the program in February of 2021. We could pay in arrears back to March of 2020. So, it was designed to cover any arrears that people experienced through COVID, and then we could pay forward three months at a time if they had funding available after those 12, if they weren't using their full 12 months. It is the highest income level we've ever been able to serve. It went up to 80% of AMI, which for a family of four, that was $83,450, but the vast majority of people we served were under 50% AMI. For ERAP 1, they must have experienced loss of income or increased expenses due to COVID. However, the Treasury recognized any increase in utilities as an increase in cost caused by COVID. And I don't know if you remember, there was a massive increase in utilities during that time, so all families were affected. So, anyone could get this funding if they met the income and they were past due on their rent. They had to prove that they were responsible for rent, and they had to prove that they were behind on rent. ERAP 2 came out very quickly after that. It allowed up to 18 months, but it was up to 18 months cumulative. So, if a family had already used ERAP 1, they could go up to 18, but the 12 months, if they only got ERAP 1, it, you know, this is an example of one of the things that made it a little challenging to manage was determining where people got their source of funds at any given time. And they must have experienced a loss of income or increased expenses during COVID. Again, I don't know anyone in our service area that did not feel one of those things, either a decrease in income or an increase in costs. It allowed for self-attestation at that point, which was strongly encouraged by U.S. Treasury. One of the things that occurred during this massive funding dump, so to speak, was entities that are at all risk averse were very cautious about utilizing these funds. There were states who didn't take any of the money. There were urban areas that didn't take any of the money. There were some that required very high hoops for people to jump through because you're almost always allowed to add extra rules if you would like. But we went the route of making it the least number of barriers as possible for families, recognizing that families in poverty face a lot of barriers out the gate. And the self-attestation piece made it possible for us to change our approach when we went to the Justice Center last summer. And self-attestation just simply means that people swear, "This is true about me." And lastly, up to 25% of funds available out of ERAP 2 could be used for the creation of affordable units. The county is working through that process right now. City of Des Moines, y'all, used your money so quickly on ERAP 2 that there were no funds left over to do that, but the county has set aside 25% of the funds, and we'll talk about that momentarily. This is how the dollars flowed. When I got that call from the city, they were talking about $6 million, about $6.5 million. And so, that seemed very doable and very attainable. So, Des Moines had 6.4, Polk County had 8.2. However, the state of Iowa did not expend their funds in the same rate, nor did they take the same approach. One thing I want to point out is we were recognized by the U.S. Treasury as the very first entity to expend their ERAP 1 funds out of everyone in the country. So, we were listed as the top eight performing programs across the United States. Some of that also came with some, I believe, misunderstanding around the purpose of emergency funding, right? Emergency funding during COVID was geared to help people very, very quickly. No offense to city governments or state governments or county governments, you're not always known as being the most quick, fast, nimble entities. So, again, I want to thank the city of Des Moines and also Polk County for recognizing that it might be better for a nonprofit to do this, so we were able to get it out very, very quickly. So, it wasn't too long, as we were beginning to expend all of the ERAP 1 money and getting into the ERAP 2 money, that we went to the state of Iowa because we could see by the pace that they were keeping that there would be no way for them to expend that money in time before they had to send it back. So, we got a $30 million tranche from the state of Iowa and then another $35 million from the state of Iowa. However, after that, they said, "No more. If we don't need the money, or if we don't use the money, we're going to go ahead and send it back." They did that. But we worked very, very hard with the Treasury and very, very hard with our legislators to recoup even more from the Treasury. The Treasury itself got a lot of money back from different entities, and they would then look again at high-performing areas and reallocate funds. So, during that time, we got another $55.6 million reallocated from Treasury through two different tranches. And what that came down to was a total investment in both Polk and the city of Des Moines of Out of all of that money, Polk County has retained $5.5 million for the creation of affordable housing units, and that's in process now, the planning, and I'm very happy to be involved with those decisions as well. And you can see up there that ERAP 2 had much, a much smaller amount of funding. The city retained almost all of their ERAP 2 funding. In fact, they're still in the process of expending it, and we cannot recoup any of that funding. So, that gives you an idea of the overall volume of what occurred.
I just wanted to stop you and thank you because I, during that whole process, to be able to get and to help people during the COVID timeframe is amazing, the work your group did, and in such a short order, so.
Thank you.
I was involved in some of those talks. I'm getting more money in because it was pretty needed.
Yeah, I thought I turned my phone off. I'm sorry. No, we appreciate that. And it, for me personally, it was the biggest lift. The biggest lift was trying to do whatever we had to do to get those funds to not be sent back. The funds that went back to Treasury didn't, weren't going to go back into the general fund. They were going to get reallocated across the country. So, there was no, you know, if you, if we send it back, we can save the deficit. That doesn't, that didn't work because it just went to other urban areas is where it primarily went. So, we were glad to be able to work towards keeping that here. We served 10,616 unique Des Moines households through this program. So, we prevented 10,616 households from being removed from their home. We opened the applications the last week of February of 2021. Again, it was a Herculean effort. It was very, very important to the mayor and council at the time to stand it up as quickly as possible. And so, we had the contract in mid-January and stood the program up the end of February. We started out by doing only phone and online with community partners. So, we subcontracted with a number of partners, Urban Dreams, the, trying to remember who all, Helping Hands, Carrying Hands, the Ankeny Service Center. There was about 12 entities that we did subcontract with and taught them how to take the applications so they could assist people. And we also subcontracted with the Iowa Legal Aid to provide legal assistance and technical assistance to the staff. So, they were put into the Justice Center and were able to assist any family that arrived there with their court cases. There were a lot of landlords at that time, even though there was a moratorium that would bring eviction case after eviction case after eviction case. And in order to not be evicted, even though there was a moratorium, a legal moratorium, families had to fill out a specific piece of paper. And so, it was really great to have Iowa Legal Aid there to help those families complete a piece of paper that kept them from being evicted during the moratorium. We moved to primarily online applications after August of 2021. The flow and urgency of the applications coming in were beyond anything we could imagine. And in our first iteration of it, we didn't do self-attestation, which meant we had to collect a lot of documentation, and that really slowed it down, which really made landlords mad because the families had Iowa Legal Aid representation, there was a moratorium, and now they're waiting even longer, even though they applied for this, because we got to a point where it was taking us around eight weeks from start of an application to being able to pay it out. I also thought that was horrendous till I went to a conference around this programming in DC and found out Baltimore was at 12 weeks. So, I was like, "Oh, we're doing better than that." So, but it was, it was difficult. We ended up being almost out of funding in December of 2022. That was between some of the tranches, you know, where we had to get the Treasury to reallocate and trying to get the state to reallocate. And so, we shut down between December 31 and June of 2023. And during that time, we thought about how can we retool this to, one, make sure we reach the most vulnerable families and to speed up the process. And so, then we moved the entire thing into the Justice Center to deal with only families that were showing up for court as they were going to literally be evicted if we weren't able to assist them. And we worked with the clerk of court and Iowa Legal Aid and got it all figured out so that as long as a family showed up to court and qualified for the program, we could administer the program that way. There was a definite downside to that approach, and you may have heard of the concept of eviction expungement. In Iowa, if a filing is made against a family, even if they are not completely kicked out of their homes due to eviction, in other words, they get filed against, they go to court, the judge throws it out, they get filed against, they pay their rent, they never even have to go to court, that eviction stays that it was filed on their record forever. There is no removing an eviction filing or a finalized eviction from someone's record in Iowa. So, I do want to prompt you that in the next legislative session, because I know it'll come again, to help us persuade our folks on the Hill to do something more reflective of what happens in any other consumer debt situation, which is it's off your record in five to seven years. A bankruptcy is off your record in seven years. A foreclosure is off your record in seven years, but an eviction is not. So, one of the bad things about us going to the Justice Center was it did mean that families had to have evictions filed against them, but it did make it so that our turn was about two weeks from the time a family applied to when the landlords got paid, and that, my number of phone calls diminished dramatically during that time. We also added case management to be able to work directly with families during the transition time and relocation assistance. So, if a family was evicted, we could help them relocate, or if we discovered that a family was living in a unit that was substantially above their ability to pay, we could help them relocate to a more affordable unit. Again, much more challenging than we originally thought because there are not more affordable units available. They're very, very few and far between. We had to end all of our direct assistance payments March 31 of 2024. We, I was explaining to the county, because by that time, that's all we had left was county funding, you know, trying to end this program is like trying to dive into a shot glass from, you know, a mile up because it was, you know, we don't want to send any money back, but we don't want to overspend any money either because, you know, we're going to be on the hook for it if we do. So, we did manage it so that our housing stability funds will last longer than our direct rental assistance funds. That, again, came from being very, very prudent with our overhead and very, very cautious. So, we will be able to continue some case management and resource and referral assistance and assistance to families to understand the eviction process, at least through the upcoming months, and to manage those forward rents that have already been paid. High points. Serving 15,051 unique households in one program was extraordinarily rewarding. And the partnerships that we maintained with the city, the county, Polk County Housing Trust Fund, Homewood, and Iowa Legal Aid in particular, we met every other week during probably the first six months of the program, that group of people, to make sure that we were providing the assistance in a way that was the most appropriate, to look for other barriers and gaps in services. And it was a, it was a strong, mighty group that did some amazing work. Also, securing over $120 million of funds that was above and beyond, that was originally legislated to the area. And the other thing that I don't have on here is the staff at Impact, which I was very neglectful not to say. The dedication, the commitment, the dig down that those staff showed to be able to move this money as quickly and as well as they did cannot be overstated. We got up to about 70 staff at one point, and they were extremely dedicated. The challenges, securing $120 million extra dollars. It was much more difficult to leverage that money back than I had ever imagined it would be. It meant at the front end, getting the agreement of the governor's office, and then on the back end, convincing Treasury that we needed it more than, you know, Detroit or DC or New York. But we got it done. The other thing is moving from an organization with an annual budget of approximately $11 million to a high of over $50 million. And that was a big lift because it wasn't just about, you know, how do we take these applications? It's where do we house the staff? How do we get enough equipment? How do we get enough accountants? How do we, you know, do all these things? It was not smooth, and I really want to give a huge shout out to the staff at the city of Des Moines as well for being very, very helpful and patient and kind when we had reports that were late or reports that were wrong, and we were just constantly needing to work. So, your staff did amazing work as well in helping us to manage these. So your staff did amazing work as well in helping us to manage these funds. And now retracting back down to approximately $12 million very, very rapidly. And that's been a challenge. Again, we got up to about 70 staff. We have to get down to about 28. And so that's been difficult this spring. The other thing that was difficult is the speed and urgency of need. Nobody goes into anti-poverty work if they don't have a giant heart and passion. So to have that need and desire to help people and see so much need and such a depth of problem was, was a challenge, but, but we did it. We get asked a lot, how was it even possible? And I've never thought about things as, is it, you know, when they, when y'all called me, I didn't think, oh, is this possible? I just went, of course we'll do it, of course we'll do it. So it never occurred to me until later to think, we should have never been able to do that. It should have never been able to happen, but it was. Some other, a couple interesting points of fact, we didn't have a software designed for such a program. And we had nothing like this. And so we first went to a vendor. We also went to the vendor multiple states were using, and it was going to be over $1 million, and we didn't like that. And so we had staff build our own out of Survey Monkey Apply. Now, you've all used Survey Monkey, so we took Survey Monkey Apply, which was designed for grant making from colleges and adapted it for the needs of this program. And it worked, and it cost $17,000. So I just want to say that the ability and ingenuity of nonprofits to, to do things that are scary is, I think, very, very helpful. Lastly, before I open it up to all the questions, I do want to, I'm going to click back. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about funding and the challenges of funding. When we assumed community action from the city, Impact was granted $200,000 a year through CDVG, and then it went down to 150. We knew it was going to go down to 150. But now it's down to 135. And part of that is because we were not expending all the funds at the height of COVID because we were, you know, dealing with rental assistance and evictions and such. You know, to go from 8,660 families we were serving with $200,000 of direct funding, you know, up to 11,500 with a decrease in funding makes our lives challenging. People often call and say, could you use money for A, B, or C? The answer is always yes. We don't see appropriate funding increases in our federal funding, CSVG, LAHEEP, any of those things. We're lucky if we get a 1% to 2% increase a year with the cost of doing business being exponentially higher. So when it comes up again, please think about how many families in the Des Moines area we are serving. What questions do you have?
Anne, I spent a couple afternoons. You described the offices at the Justice Center. I think that's a little bit of a stretch.
The Justice Center was...
Bear walls. You could see the metal studs, and it was like a giant closet. Anyway, I was in awe of how, well, there are a lot of people that left those meetings in tears and just hugged anyone that they could possibly find that you have had an incredible, dedicated staff down there. Ashley Slodide is a friend of ours, and, and he was, he told some pretty great stories about helping people. But I thought it was interesting when there was like a table for the landlord or the property owner, and then a table for the tenant in the same room at the same time, trying to, to work through all of the issues, some much including some, some language barriers. But it was quite an operation that you put together. No one would describe those as palatial offices. It was like folding tables, folding tables and chairs. So anyway.
Yeah, the Justice Center has a section of it that's never been finished. All the places that have been finished are occupied. So for us to have a space we were in and unfinished, and I got for the first time in my career an OSHA complaint. We got an OSHA complaint because there was fiberglass that was uncovered. And so they filed it against us. I'm like, oh, that's not our space. But anyway, they, we worked very quickly with the county and got that remedied, and everyone lived happily ever after, but we did get an OSHA complaint about that space.
Apparently, on, on one occasion, after a three-day holiday, they had so many case filings that it was all hands on deck, that like a fire drill, you had to bring everyone from your office down to help.
Yeah, our chief program officer went, our housing coordinator went. I didn't go because I don't know how to do any of that. So yeah, everybody did go. There were, there were days on the docket that were over 100.
Or there was a couple days you, you, you went over 200 cases, so.
Well, you know, just another day. But it was, it was very, very rewarding, but it was also pretty Herculean. So it's been interesting watching us. This is Shrink.
Linda?
Great work. Thank you very much. I know several families that have been involved that have used the services. I, I'm fearful for what's going to happen now because I know, I know personally some families that applied, and it must have been after March because you're all out of funds. And we just gave them a step up. It was just a, a step up to get them by so they could get back on track, and now that's gone. And I just think it's going to cause long, longer-term negative issues, so.
Yeah, the, and one thing that, the other negative about going to the Justice Center and doing what we did, there was a lot of good reasons to do it. I think I would do the same thing again. But we won't be able to track what's happening based on eviction filings because those will not go up because they were required to get assistance in the last year of the program. We'll see it in people being completely displaced. And one of the challenges, I think, is the idea that when you have income-constrained families and you throw in a pandemic and everything that came with that, most of these families ended up in a very, very deep financial hole, whether they had this massive arrears here, whether it was in utilities, whether it was borrowing money, whether it was payday loans, whether it was, whatever it was, even being able to help them with rent for a number of months did not get them all back to level set. And I think being able to provide rent ahead was, was massively helpful. But the overall economic system that we're experiencing didn't get fixed miraculously. And so it's still a problem. We had, someone asked me recently, did we just backfill poverty? And one answer to that is yes, because in order to have all families be self-sufficient, what has to happen systemically is massive, and it's not something that you can fix one by one with a family. So the other thing I want to commend the City of Des Moines on is investing in basic income. That is the solution to long-term income inequity and the inability for people to earn a living wage. So that is the type of thing that helps. The other thing that helps is being able to stabilize a family like this did. I wish we had more money to do another study. We did a study in the midst, if you'd like me to send it to you, that looked at the reasoning why families were in the situation they were, and some particulars about the families. It was very helpful. I would love to know how many families also really benefited in a long-term, long way because of this, but we have no way to, to measure that. But there's definitely families who will not be able to maintain. And those rents went up. I mean, we saw, we saw things and people concerned about fraud all the time. We saw very, very little fraud on the side of low-income families. We saw almost all the fraud we saw on the side of either landlords or bad external actors. And one of the things we saw was once these payments were available, rents went up. And they're going to stay up, and those families won't be able to maintain it.
Well, you did a, you did a really good job. One thing that I noticed changed over the time was the paperwork, because I know that there are some families out there that were very, very fearful.
Yes.
About, about the information that they had to give. And I know, I was given assurances that it doesn't, it doesn't matter, your status, just come and apply.
Yep.
And, and that was, that was good, but I think it was still a barrier. I mean, I know that there were people that could have benefited from it that were not able to, that chose not to.
Chose not, yeah.
Because they were so afraid. So when you went to that little less paperwork that happened.
Yeah, and it, you know, we, our philosophy around direct service and customer service is again to remove as many barriers as possible, to treat people with as much dignity and respect as possible. And, you know, we always urge families, if you're not sure, call us, and we'll tell, you know, you know, if you call us and you say, do I need a security number for this program? Some programs require it, some programs don't. Some, you know, we, we ran into people who earned money, what I would call in the gray economy, which was not easy to document, and so we were able to work through those things. So we got very, very creative towards the end.
Good job.
Chris?
Thank you very much. Very, very impressive. I have a question, but I'll tell you my, my bias first. I think for us to help families out of poverty, people out of poverty, we have to make sure that the poverty is not concentrated because, because the, the problems tend to mount. And, and so I, I look at this slide, and I think, I have a lot of pride of the commitment that the City of Des Moines has made to affordable housing, trying to improve our neighborhoods. But that would be great data for each community if you had it. What percentage of the population do they have of your region? And what percentage have they made affordable for the people that are, that are living at the poverty level? And I'm, I'm wondering if you would get us that information, because that would be a, that'd be a clear, non-Demoine data point about what communities are not pulling their fair weight when it comes to trying to build.
I live there, Ankeny.
Yeah, yeah.
Ankeny.
There's going to be a...
I live in Ankeny. I'll just say it out loud. I mean, yeah, there are in our area, and we, our data we have is primarily centric to counties as a whole. So, you know, we can tell you a lot about what's going on in Boone, Jasper, Marion, and Warren County, and we can tell you a lot about Polk as a whole, but splitting out the Des Moines and suburban and rural Des Moines areas is more difficult. It's not impossible, but we have that. But one of the challenges of truly designing affordable housing is our own definition of what is affordable housing. I use my brother a lot. I have a brother who's on permanent disability, and he is on SSDI, which is a lot higher than SSI. In Iowa, SSI, which is security insurance, if you're disabled and didn't earn enough money to fill up your little bank, is just around $900. Now, my brother gets $1,600. But the, the rule, when people ask you about affordable housing, you probably can all tell me, what percentage of income do they say is affordable?
30.
30.
30. 30. We'll go back to the person who gets $800 a month in SSI. What is 30% of 800? I cannot do the math. 240?
Wow.
How much would that leave, thank you, how much would that leave that family for everything else? But, look at the math. Look, you gotta, you gotta like your city manager being able to do the math. So 560 is what it was? 560. So they then have 560 left to pay for everything else essential in their life, and it does not cover it. So the idea of that number, that if we just build housing at 30% of people's income will be okay, is a myth because they still don't have enough to cover their other costs. And so a lot of our programming has been designed around that myth, when it really only works for middle-income people. Jeff Bezos, you know, let's say Jeff Bezos is worth $1 million a year, he can spend 90% of his income on housing and still be A-OK. So the 30% only really works for, you know, so we have to reframe what that means to have affordable housing. I say affordable housing is when someone can still meet all their other basic needs and pay for their housing. So we have to look at those numbers different. We rely on Common Good Iowa's data on living wage. If you really want to get scared, look at MIT's. MIT and Penn State also do a living wage calculator that is recognized across the country. And, and the numbers of the gap between what most of our families earn and what they need to earn to be completely self-sufficient is massive. That's why I say you also can't do it one person at a time. You can't say, we just need to fix the family, because there's really nothing wrong with most of these families. There's something wrong with how we've set up our economy.
It's complicated.
It's complicated. But I did have a, I recently read an article, and I said, I talked about Ankeny because that's where I live, where our senator said, you can't fix poverty with money. And I'm like, oh, but you can. So, you know, that is the problem. It's math.
It's how you get it equally out so that people can lift people up, and I think that's why that basic income pilot.
It's, it's amazing.
Was working from what the early indications, so hopefully...
And we got to hear stories last week from Uplift where families that were receiving the funds came and told us their story. And if you haven't seen that, I think it's on tape, you can see it.
Does anyone else like to have something?
I have one comment, one question, one comment. I appreciate where Chris is going with data. Dart came to my mind when he made that mention. I think it's healthy for us to always think in terms of regions so that we can understand as a region what's happening. I wonder sometime if our, and this is not to disown our other communities that surround us, but this is so impactful to us, that being poverty, because we see so much of it, but it is everywhere.
Yes.
It would be good to know where. How do people find you? How do people in need find you?
Well, currently, we don't do a lot of promotion because we can barely meet the need that's coming through our door now. They primarily hear about us either through word of mouth or every fall, Mid-America puts in their billing to contact us if they have any issues, you know. But it is primarily word of mouth. We do not serve all the people that qualify for our services, nor could we. We, like I said, this year, we almost ran out of LAHEEP funding, so we don't do a lot of outreach, especially in Des Moines and Polk County, because we just don't have the funds to meet the need of all families. But we haven't had a problem with the customers, so.
You're a breath of fresh air on a Monday morning, starting a week. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure you'll always think that, but we'll go with that today.
So if there's one area, do you say housing is your most pressing area?
I think housing because it's so much, the biggest part of the cost of, this and childcare. I've always said, if we could fix housing and childcare, we would be in great shape. But housing now because it also has such an incredible detrimental effect on families when they have to be transient.
Right. Okay. Anything else?
Do you think low and moderate income housing or, or low-mod housing is a better descriptive descriptor than affordable?
You know, we change those phrases all the time, trying to make what we do more palatable to different types of people. You know, if I talk about low-income housing to someone who believes that poverty is a personal issue, that, that doesn't hit. But affordable housing, because everybody wants affordable housing, all those terms have changed over the years back and forth based on who we are trying to get the audience to bite in. I think, you know, you can use the term affordable, but then you have to not come up with a percentage formula. You have to look at the income of each person and say, what is truly affordable for this family? The bad news is, some of it is almost no cost, you know, because when you are, you know, without any income at all, how do you pay 30% of that?
Okay.
And that's very few, by the way. We have very, very few families who have no income at all. It's like 10% or something.
Okay. I think that with that, thank you for the presentation.
It was really fun. It's good to see you all.
Thank you for giving us the information.
Anytime. And thank you for giving us the privilege of being able to serve the people of Des Moines.
Thank you for the work and for your staff, for all the work they do.
Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, Anne. I think we'll move on to the second item. We've got Nick coming up. We are more than halfway through ARPA funding and expenditures, so we thought we'd give an update at this point and see how we're going to finish out these commitments that we've made. Nick will go into it with the details, but just, just as a reminder for everyone, and maybe Mike, I apologize I hadn't had a chance to explain this aspect, but... and maybe Mike, I apologize, I hadn't had a chance to explain this aspect, but, um, the federal funding that we received, ARPA, uh, started out with some pretty restrictive uh, covenants with how to spend those funds. Uh, and, uh, they had temporary or interim rules, things of that nature from the Treasury. They got more and more lax as time went on, but we were under the gun to get the money out to those organizations that needed to help our residents quickly. So there was always this balance of, yes, let's go ahead and commit to this project, this, this pro, program. Um, but then the rules got more loose and available for more general type government work. Um, so there's also a balance in these numbers and recipients that I will tell you, uh, we, under the circumstance, um, we did the right thing. We were able to help a lot of organizations across our community. But because it was restrictive and it needed to go out to other organizations early on, uh, we were able to, to allocate the funds in the way you see here. Had this been right from the start, as loose as, uh, the rules ended up being in the end, um, I think there would have been a temptation, quite frankly, to put more of this money into the city's general fund. And you see actually as a percentage, there's very little of that. So you may hear from other communities that actually did not allocate the funds, in fact, very few did in our metro area, to other organizations, uh, to, to help our nonprofits and, uh, things of that nature. So I feel proud that we were able to lift up these other organizations that you're gonna hear about, um, but at the same time, um, uh, it, it's important that we, uh, recognize that it, it takes a team, it takes those nonprofits, uh, to be, to have our, uh, community, uh, receive the services they need. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you, Scott. Um, this list is kind of summarized and I want to kind of talk through some of the technical aspects of, of the sheets that you kind of understand what, what, what it's looking at. Um, first and foremost, this is our anticipated expenditures as of the end of this fiscal year, so at, um, as of June 30th. So we kind of have a bit of estimates and we have some transfers that are still going to take place over the next, um, month, month and a half. So, um, what you can see here is we have a column of, of the committed and that's the different process, the different discussions that we had. When was that? Uh, 2021, I think. So, uh, it seems like it was much, much longer ago, but, um, as we worked through all of these, uh, different, um, commitments that the council went through, um, we've kind of gone through and had either agreements directly through the ARPA fund itself, or we've been able to do, um, things that were, um, general fund made possible by ARPA because we were, there were some expenses that we were able to have ARPA cover and then it freed up general funds to be able to, to spend towards. So that's the two different columns that you're seeing there. Um, so we still had that same commitment. It was just kind of how we reported and how we, um, are able to, to utilize those funds with the rules and how they've changed over the course of time. It was the first time I've ever heard the term of interim final rules, uh, as it relates to federal, uh, federal compliance, uh, is what we were given for the ARPA rules that we had to follow for these funds. Um, the amount that we received in the two different tranches of four ARPA funds was just under 95 million. To put in perspective, um, as Scott alluded to, we were able to look at, um, how much could actually go to the general fund based off of, uh, projected revenue losses? What they did was they looked at the prior three years, so 17, 18, fiscally, you're 17, 18, and 19. And based off of the growth that we had in those three years, you could project that growth off of what you, what you would expect to see in 2020, 21, 22, and 23. So those four years. If we look at that, that was over 100 million for the city of Des Moines in that, in that calculation that we did. Now, it wasn't just general fund, it was, um, kind of gen, kind of general stuff. So there was other funds that got associated with that in that calculation. So there's a lot of different things that would have come into play, not just the general fund. Um, so in that scenario, that would have been, um, the path of least resistance, we'll say, on those general fund dollars of being able to do. Um, but from here, we're going through a lot of the different, uh, groupings and you kind of see, we have it sorted by that ARPA category, that second column. Uh, first, the top part is budgetary support. Um, some of those are kind of those one-time, kind of trying to, uh, solve some shortfalls or, uh, what needs, uh, what needs we had and tried to avoid some, uh, some of the expenses to not take on debt with like the city facilities. Um, and then parking fund was the one that was hit probably the most as well. Um, and so we had 2024 and 2025 general fund support as well. So as we kind of move into the discussion of 2026, as we go into this, the next budget season, um, ARPA is not there as a, as a possibility through that. Um, as we go through, some of the, the last column, we have unexpended funds. That last column is dealing with those ones that we had ARPA agreements in place, uh, where we committed it through, uh, through the contract itself. Um, we have to have all of our commitments done by the end of this calendar year. And so some of those contracts we have, so the, the, you can kind of see that with the stormwater, a lot of that was with the, um, Hamilton drain. And so as that work progresses, that's when those funds will actually be moved to cover those costs. We do that on a quarterly basis. So even though it says, uh, unexpended, it's already committed in that contract, we just have to get the work done. We have to have it committed by the end of this calendar year and it has to be expended by 2026. So as we kind of go through, uh, one thing that I want to say, the larger dollar on the, uh, unexpended is, uh, in the airport terminal. Um, we've committed, uh, we, we had a, a commitment of wanting to do 10 million to, towards the airport. Um, there is an item on tonight's, uh, council meeting for the grant agreement that deals with this, um, where we're going to be, uh, that agreement lays out for equal payments of 2.5, starting with this fiscal year and then at the end of each calendar year. Um, still falls under that same, um, 2026 timeframe. I can go through and kind of talk through, but the, most of the unexpended that you see here are dealing with, um, contracts that we are waiting for the con, the contract to be completed, for us to be able to, to move those funds to cover those projects. But, uh, there's a lot of information here and it's a lot of stuff that, um, we can go into more detail or, uh, we can get information sent off as to which projects are actually within, uh, different ones. I'd have to go with other, uh, directors to kind of maybe be able to address that with you, but I wanted to at least get this out to you guys to be able to refresh where we were and where we at, where we anticipate being at the end of this fiscal year. Okay.
Violence prevention, is that the $300,000?
For the cure violence?
That was cure violence that they have, they just haven't used at all or?
No, um, it's, it would be, there was three year, so, uh,
Oh, okay.
The general fund covered the first year and then the, the 300,000 was the second year.
Will be used.
Yes. But it would be expended and, um, if it, if, if it is renewed, it would be renewed in November, so.
Okay. And then the, uh, affordable housing, new construction?
Hmm?
What is that?
So those were, uh, of the funds that were made available to economic development deals, um, for affordable housing, um, trying to work with them.
Okay.
I think Josh had a question. Do you have any other things, Lunda?
No.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess I have a question about how this is presented.
Okay.
Um, there's a ARPA funds, which my understanding is all of this is ARPA funds, right?
So it, it, where the expenditures are actually kind of coming out. So, um, ARPA funds is a special revenue and then, uh, the general funds were basically, ARPA funds were, uh, used to cover some general fund expenses, which allowed the general fund to cover, uh, these programs. So it's, it's in a way, they're general funds made possible by ARPA. So that was where it was actually expended out because we were moving towards trying to use the ease of reporting to the Department of Treasury to be able to point towards expenses that were in the general fund, um, to utilize the federal dollars. And then we were able to use, um, little less restricted funds out of the general fund.
So it, just to add to that, so that it's all ARPA funds, you're right. It all adds up to the 94.8. But the other benefit that you may have caught from, from Nick is that by flowing through the general fund, you remove the expenditure date requirements because it would need to be committed and then expended by certain dates if it stayed in the ARPA bucket. And so by flowing some of these funds, about 51 million of it, through the general fund, uh, we no longer have those timeline restrictions in case our partners on the recipient's side run behind their timelines and.
Right. So that, that was the other question that, that I had and, and maybe it's not clear here. It, it seemed like the ARPA fund category, those dollars were all already expended and is it a fair reading that general fund were not already expended?
Um, no, like, for example, um, like the preschool program, the Des Moines public schools, that million, that is an ARPA agreement. It's, it, it tends to be on the timing in which we actually had the agreement, whether it was going to be ARPA funds or, or general fund. Because, um, us trying to get the dollars out sooner, those were agreements that were kind of, that fell under the ARPA funds, whereas once we were able to point towards revenue losses and cover general funds, then we were start, being able to start reflecting on that. Because the first year that we calculated the revenue loss, we actually didn't have a revenue loss for fiscal year 2020, excuse me, because we had, uh, the new revenue sources of local option. So that actually made it to where we actually had more than the anticipated, uh, revenue growth. We, we didn't get, um, in trying to work with the Department of Treasury for things like that, where it was a brand new revenue source, they basically, um, said that that didn't want to take any adjustments for that type of approach. And so we had to, uh, wait until that second year of projected revenue for us to actually show revenue loss. And we weren't sure how that was going to look. And then it subsequently became very drastically different in the following three years.
Yeah, that wasn't my question. So I'm trying to understand, I mean, this is being presented as anticipated expenditure. So in presumably, anything that is in one and two has been spent, although my impression is that the general fund is not like, what, what has actually been spent versus, I mean, for purposes of ARPA, and we've spent it all because it's gone into the general fund, but the dollars haven't necessarily gone to the program.
No.
Is that the right read?
Like stormwater is an example where that's not the case. So the stormwater was where we committed the $8 million towards the, the construction contract for Hamilton drain, and so we've only spent or we anticipate.
Can I, can I go, can I ask a different way maybe?
Sure.
You've gone, your examples, Nick, and I appreciate it because I'm confused too.
Okay.
Examples that you go to are ones that have dollars in the far right column of blue.
Those are the ones that have not been spent.
Sure.
Or the stormwater, childcare. So those are the ones that like, we can see that there's money not spent. But of the ones that have no dollars in blue, can we assume that that's all been spent?
The only.
Can't. Because, I mean, we haven't spent the 10 million on the North Side Community Center, right?
It's being, it's being transferred into that CIP. So from that standpoint, it, it's being funded into that CIP.
I see what you're saying.
Right. But we've, I, I mean, there's a difference between identifying what we're spending it on and what is actually, what is actually left to, to spend the, the project on, right?
I mean, we, we have hired a contractor and, you know, like.
We've committed it, basically.
Well, and actually a step further, the accounting has shown that it's moved into that project.
Yes, yes.
So that's technically how it's.
How we're showing it being spent by, by the end of this count, by the end of this fiscal year, we will be transferring it into those projects. Another example of those would be, would be those spark park projects or trails. Those that are the general fund of, the, but general fund dollars, um, we are going to be transferring those specifically to those projects that we have. And so from, uh, an accounting standpoint, it's no longer going to be in art, in ARPA fund or the general fund, it's going to be in that CIP to actually be spent.
Much like bond proceeds.
Yes.
We get those in advance, they sit there in the project funds until the construction occurs. This is showing you the accounting side of it. The funds will be transferred to the right projects.
Yes, that, and that's what I, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
Like this is the accounting, what's the status of the various projects? Cause a number of these, like parks might be a good example.
Yes.
We've identified parked projects, but it, and what, what's hard for me to keep track of is what are the parked projects that are going to be funded this way? Cause it might be over the next two, three years, right? Or is it all?
Two. Yeah, probably two.
One or two.
Yep.
Same, same thing on, on some of the, these other, other pieces. It, it, it's just hard to, I know we've allocated the dollars towards these things, but then one of the things I struggle with going back, I'll, I'll give an example where, where I've struggled to follow this, you know, the sidewalks and trails, where we've in theory made a $3 million commitment from the general fund over time and the dollars here were above and beyond that.
So from the bond issues we've committed?
Yes.
Right. That was part of local option sales tax, right?
There were some, there were some.
The connection to the Gady Wilson trail has been deleted. I know that was, uh, 1 million there.
Right. But it, it, it's just helping separate out what, what are the specific projects that are being paid for with ARPA versus what was our general fund commitment? Trees, trees is another example, right? I mean, we, we made a commitment to our, to implementing our urban forest master plan and then we supplemented that with pre-spending here. The, the piece that I struggle to separate out is what was our annual commitment that we made at the time when we adopted the plan and what's being paid for with ARPA dollars?
Some of those dollars are helping us make that commitment, right?
Yeah. And the other thing I would say too, is that summarized within the capital improvement
Every time a project is brought down.
So, I mean, if we, if you go back to the capital improvement plan itself, you'll actually see the, the dollars being transferred into that, so you can kind of see where those expenses are. And that's kind of where those are being summarized. So the way we went through the budget processes last time for getting approval back in April, um, that kind of laid out which projects were being funded via the general fund or ARPA specific, and then basically showing where those expenses is actually lie. Now, we could in theory go back and if there's specific topics that we want to, we would have to go and work with engineering and parks and, and others to, to actually show what the timing of the expenses are, depending on the, uh, timing of the construction and where they are in any of those processes. But that would be a lot more detail that, um, I was not, uh, I was going from an accounting standpoint, um, to describe.
So this is a recap of how the money has been expended?
Mm-hmm.
And if, does anyone else want that detailed level brought down further? Or do you want to follow it with the CIP?
And you're always welcome to contact Nick directly with any, any question of the specifics. I, I would just go real quick, was gonna, the takeaway from this morning was that you already knew that the funds had been committed, all the funds had been committed. We are down to six, seven, eight items, uh, that, that still have, uh, spend, uh, that need to occur after this June. And there's a plan for each one of those to get that done. And so that was the, the takeaway from this morning is not only have we committed all the dollars, but we've nearly, with the exception of 13 million, put it in the right accounts, put it in the projects and is, is in process of being spent.
And will you share with, with us what that plan is? You just said there's a plan.
Well, for each item that you see on the expended column?
Yes.
So like just mentioned.
On the funds that are, the ones that, the funds that are expended.
A lot of it's timing.
Oh, yeah. We can give you more detail on that, but the great example is the airport is going to get four payments, so 2, 2.5 million.
And then the stormwater as well is that, that was.
Hamilton drain.
And that one is, is, until they actually do the work, we're, we're not transferring those funds.
And then in Des Moines schools.
They have to get through a school year. So it's the next school year, then they would pay for it.
We pay them in arrears.
So they'll, they'll still be using the rest of those funds?
They're expanded, they're expanding classrooms and then. They're expanding, they're expanding classrooms, and then, you know, it just goes each year.
So, because that was 1.3, 1 million, 1 million for the schools.
I guess my question would be, the 142,000 of additional revenue for sidewalks, where are we going to use that at and when?
Those, those actually, I believe, and I can confirm that with you, those are based off of the ones that were contracts. So we've already-
So it's already been allocated?
It's already been allocated. They just have to do the work.
Final payment.
The final payments, because they were ARPA agreements, so.
Okay.
And what kind of accounting is done, being done to know that the money that we've given were actually used for what they were applied for?
A lot of, yeah.
That's what the contracts and agreements are for.
Each one of the contracts has those, those type of agreements and different things like that. So the airport agreement, for example, that's going to be on there tonight, there is subsequent reporting that they have to give us for the terminal, for us to-
I just want to see how they're using that.
Yep. There was a reporting mechanism in those contracts. If it was a capital project, one, that's a little bit different, because we're obviously seeing the construction being happen, haven't happened.
So it's amazing how fast you can spend $95 million. And, and the fact that we were the one, the one city that gave it back to the community to make impact and help them. Because I know even if you look at Bravo, we were the only city, which was truly something that was hurt by sales tax or lack of, and that gave back. So that's why that's coming back to the Des Moines community directly, that money. So, thank you.
Well, I would say that the zoo and the botanical center and Bravo, all three of those together, you know, I think we were the only ones that gave those amenities, and they did, they were directly affected with their attendance.
They were the most directly.
And so I thought that was good, that we were able to do that.
I appreciate this level of documentation. It's a reflection, to me, of good governance.
Thank you. Okay, with that, if there's no other questions, we will reconvene for our regular, we have a closed session at 3:30, and our regular meeting starts at 4:50 with a proclamation. So we will see everybody back at the end of the day. Thank you.
3:30, right, Jeff?
3:30.
Actually, one of the items that we were going to visit with council about came off, so we could do 3:45, I think.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thanks for that 15 minutes. Okay, 3:45, everyone.
Yes, I brought those, and I, there was one extra-